Yes, who's can you hand me one of the agenda? Oh, never mind. I got it. Okay, notice here by Giren and Willis County Commissioners Court will hold a regular meeting at the county judges office commissioners court room in 576 West Main Street in Rainbow 10758 due on Monday, December 30th, 2024 at 10:00 a.m. For the purpose of discussion of one item during the course of the meeting, in the discussion of any items, the agenda to be held executive procession. Willis County Commissioners Court will convene such executive procession according to section 551401 of Texas law and code. To be final action, final decision, final vote, we require the opinion of Willis County Commissioners Court with regards to any matter considering such pros or executive meeting or session. And the final decision, final vote should be either in the open meeting, covered by an order from the recurring of public meeting, or at a chapter one meeting of the Willis County Commissioners Court, and orders thereof, as the council will determine. So we have my call this meeting to order, and I am chief that for the purpose to establish accordingly.
Yes, sir. Commissioner precinct one, absent. Commissioner precinct two.
Present.
Commissioner precinct three.
Present.
Commissioner precinct four.
Present.
I apologize, Judge.
Present. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Dear Lord, as the new year begins, we look to you for our hope, joy, and peace. Give us the courage to do all that you ask of us. Please, please also make us brave to, to not do what isn't from you. Show us how to walk in grace and embrace your love for us. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
May he see. Okay, uh, we do the public comments, is there any? Morning.
Morning.
Morning, Commissioner. For the record, Commissioner. Okay, let's, let's go to, uh, the given mission commissioners. Now, we'll go to line item number 12, discussion possible action to approve tax evasion agreement between Willis County, Texas and Life or Energy Storage LLC. Possible action required, and, uh, as you know, commissioners, we just had the public hearing pertaining to that as required by the guidance.
Judge, um, I think this is a great, great opportunity for Willis County, and I think this tax evasion also aligns with some of the, the things that we've done in the past. So I'll make a motion, uh, to approve the tax evasion agreement between Willis County, Texas and the Life or Energy Storage LLC.
Motion by Commissioner Vasquez, can I extend a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye. And all opposed, same sign, motion carried. Okay, so we go back to, thank you, Mr. Frank. We go back to line item number five, uh, brought of flames. Do we have any?
Yeah, please. Can we come back to it? I apologize, it's just, uh, they're reprinting stuff.
Okay. We're gonna go ahead and come back to line item number five, we move on. We'll go back to line item, uh, we'll go back to line number six, discussion action to certify and accept grant from D.J. Edward, uh, Byer, Byron Memorial Justice District. Grant number 4975601, grant period October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025, for the release from the constable, officer precinct four, action required. Constable Asa is here representing.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Uh, last year, we, uh, we applied for a grant, uh, that we came out short, uh, we didn't follow the, the top 10. Uh, but then there were, they just contacted us maybe a month ago that, uh, there was some money left, so they are, they're gonna award us with about 13 some, 13,000 something. Uh, for the past couple, three years, we've been trying to get a R M S system, uh, wreckage management system, right, for, for all the stuff that we do. Uh, we've been trying to get one for the past three years, like I said, and, uh, we have been trying to get the, uh, E-force, just like the sheriff's office, but it's pretty pricey. Uh, I know I've already spoken to the judge, they were looking into a, a different type of, or another company that's a lot less, that falls into the, uh, the amount that we're being granted, so. Uh, but right now, we, we still gotta do the legwork, I still gotta contact neighbors to see if, uh, cause I'm trying to see if we can get the other constables on board as well, to see, but, uh, I don't know. Uh, I have to contact neighbors first to see if they'll allow us to do one system, uh, and not, they gotta get their own, but, uh, all we want on today is to see if we can accept the, uh, the grant, so.
Basically, Commissioner, the way that, uh, Constable Asa is going to do is that this will be, I guess, moving up on how, uh, citations and things of that nature, recordings of events of, uh.
Citations, uh, yes. Like, right now, we've been doing our system, uh, we've been doing a Word document, and we've just been saving it all to our computer. Uh, it's only a matter of time, you never know, a computer goes down, and everything that we've done just erases, so, uh, it's a better way of, uh, saving our.
Is this a one-time fee, or is it a monthly?
Uh, uh, that's the thing, it is a, uh, an annual fee, um, but it's not as expensive as the E-force, and that's something that maybe we can bring up during budget talk to see if maybe you can help us out. I know, I think it's like 2,000 something compared to what, what was it, six, maybe seven, I'm not sure.
So the, the fee is an annual fee for maintenance, uh, net maintenance, uh, software maintenance, licensing, so with, uh, what we were looking at is, uh, annual fee is 2,569, with E-force, that amount was 3,000, 3,701 per year, and the software for E-force was 24,000, and the one we're looking at right now is 10,000 and change, cause they're giving us a discount.
Now, and.
So, like I was saying to, I told you that, that's why I was trying to get ahold of neighbors to see if we can do a reporting thing. I mean, uh, to see if they'll allow us to get the other constables on board, so like that, we can, everybody pays, uh, the, a little bit of, of the fee. Yeah, so like that, we don't have to, you know.
But getting back to the question that Commissioner Vasquez posed is that, uh, in this grant, it'll cover the first year.
The first year to get service. Cover the software and, and licensing.
Training as well, so.
Yeah, and they'll also give a, they'll train us 16 hours of how to use the software.
So then, then you gotta apply again?
Uh, not.
Well, I mean, it, it, just, I'm sorry, you, you, but the 13,000 dollars, you, you buy the software.
Yeah.
Is that now the software is yours, or?
Yes.
Okay, so then it's not.
It's just the annual fee.
So there's not like, uh, well, I gotta redo the grant, and if I would get awarded, then we have to pay the 13,000?
No.
This is a one-time?
Yes, yes. So the yearly fee is for the making.
What does the grant include? It includes also the, um, any equipment?
Yes, everything that, so the whole software, that's what, the, the pricing of the software that includes everything is here being installed.
Does it include the equipment that you're gonna be using, the computer, or device, or anything like that?
We have computers. Uh, we've been, we had a meeting with.
And then it includes the training?
Yes. We had a meeting with, uh, Jesse, so, uh, man, trying to figure out how we can, I think there's three different ways that we can try to implement it there, especially in our office, so.
So, to answer, uh, Commissioner's question, is it the only new cost of a recurring cost would be the 2,500 yearly?
Yes.
So everything else would already be the one-time?
One-time.
And then would you be able to reapply for the 2,500, uh, with the grant, or not? I think that's what you were asking, right?
Yeah. I don't, I don't believe we can, uh, cause when, when I was doing it with E-force, when I was applying for the grant, it, it included five years of, uh, of the annual licensing. But, uh, E-grants out there, they said, no, we only cover years, one, on a year.
But does it have to say something else didn't come up?
Yeah, I mean, something would come up and, you know, I, we can always ask, we can ask and see what they say, and if they say, no, we can't.
And what was the amount that they had?
That they awarded.
13,990 and 64 cents.
So the other constables will, will be able to utilize it also?
So that's why we need to contact neighbors to see if they have to report their own, or if we can get exempt and try to report together. So like that, uh, the, that fee, 2,000 something, the annual fee, we can take it from each const, uh, constable's office. Basically, i- if we don't, if we don't need to, if we're exempt from neighbors, then, um, the constables, each constable would be able to fall in as a user under this software, as a user, so they would have to pay their own. But if, if neighbors says, no, you have to do our own reporting, they have to do their own, since they're separate agencies, then they would have to get the software themselves.
What, what's the name of the R M S system?
Cardinal's, uh. Cardinal Trucking.
Cardinal?
Cardinal. The, uh, Life or School District uses it, that's where we, yeah, so Mike Sontas, the constable that's coming in, uh, he's very familiar with the system already, so he was the one. We reached out to see what kind of system they're using, it's, it's been working for them, so.
It would seem, Commissioner, once I could correct, if I'm wrong, it would seem like that we could do it under one constable heading, constable one, two, three, four, five, and just check off whichever one it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, neighbors will be the one who can decide whether or not they'll allow it, that's, that's, it, it seems in, in theory, like it should work that way, but whether or not their system is able to break it down under one user, or by users.
Yeah, because when we do the report, it'll show constable's office and how long we're gonna be putting, that's why with, uh, the cardinal, the people that we talked to said that, hey, it'll, it'll work.
We can do it.
But we need to talk to neighbors to see if they'll allow it.
And refresh my memory, what's the neighbor?
Neighbors is the, uh, the.
They're reporting for the grant.
Yeah, grant.
See, that's, uh, so it.
Now, under the grant, uh, it's only constable precinct four that apply for it, so accepting it under the grant through, uh, September 30th of this coming year uh, would essentially be implementing it for constable precinct four. After the grant is over, then you can look at adding additional constables, but through the duration of the grant, it would only be precinct four. Because that's who it was awarded to, and I believe the grant was written only for precinct four.
Yeah, for.
How do y'all report your, your, your neighbors now? How do you satisfy that?
I think we're, uh, exempt right now.
If possible, it'd give you some time to.
Yeah, I just, that's what we just wanna do.
Get the new numbers awarded.
Sounds good.
Yeah, we, we wanna do the legwork and make sure we're on the right track, and then, uh, like I said, if we can't do it, well, at least we tried.
I believe on this one, there's no match, it's a hundred percent.
Yes.
For this one.
Judge, if you're taking motions, I'm, I'm moving to approve.
Second, Commissioner. Okay, I am moving by, uh, Commissioner Garcia to approve, and a second by Commissioner Tegarina. Like what I would suggest, you're calling this company?
Yes.
Instead of that, basically, uh, uh, one constable cannot afford that fee, however, if they're willing to provide service to the full five, then the county may be able to be able to adjust everybody's budget, and therefore, the work for it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Judge.
Judge, I'm just, um, ask if they can just, I guess, confirm, cause on the agenda line item, they have the wrong grant number. Um, it's off by one digit, and, uh, if they can just state the right grant number.
Okay, let me.
Fix it now?
I believe the grant number is 498, 4978601.
601. 49786301, so instead of five, it's eight?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
I, uh, amend my motion, uh, actually amend the grant number to 4978601.
Line item number two, motion.
Add my second.
And I amend the second, and we have voted on it, and so therefore, uh, if there isn't any more, uh, discussion, uh, all in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carried.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge, thank you.
Judge, I have no questions.
Okay, so we go back to line item five of two of flames, inspired. Judge, there would be these, most approved, uh, motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve, can I extend a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tegarina, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number seven, discussion act to request for Melissa A., who needs vacation capaci- capacitorial time to be paid out, action required, and the auditor will explain.
Yes, um, commissioners, um, we put this line item here, we already spoke with, um, Melissa in regards to her vacation and contempt for time being paid out, since she was, um, the winner of, of the tax, you know, um, collection, tax officer, or what is it, tax collection officer, um, so she won the election, and therefore, um, so she won, so she can get all her time paid out before she, uh, or on her first, um, payroll chart. Uh, we're asking for approval.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tegarina to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Vasquez, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number eight, discussion act to approve a new account with Magic Valley Electric Cooperative. For the Lasada Fire Department to be paid out from Lasada Community Finance, and required.
That one, Judge, we applied to that, Dave, but I guess there was a confusion as far as the account, I think that was the security, that was there, right?
Yes.
So I'm just asking, I'm wishing to have that connected.
Move to approve, Judge. I have a motion by Commissioner Tegarina to approve.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number nine, discussion approval, ratification of county judges' action to approve unforeseen travel for inmate transport for meal only for inmate, inmate's jailer and deputy to be paid out of general administration inmate transport account, line item 01461135. And I believe this has to do with accounting, may I, may I, Commissioner?
Yes, it was basically, um, this did come up, and the timing, uh, was out of the control of the sheriff's department, so they needed to go make that travel. Um, in order for me to cut the check, I asked the judge if we should, if it's okay to go ahead and process it, and, um, he agreed, and so basically, this is just a line item. You know, going back, that he did approve to make the payment, and it was on, I believe, on, oh, Tuesday, so it's out of the norm, usually we cut checks on Fridays only, and this isn't like a pre-approved line item. Maybe in the future, maybe during budget workshops, we could include, um, inmate transport as a pre-approved item, so we don't have to be coming back to court.
Every time.
Every time.
This is a one-time thing?
Yes.
And it was just meals only, there was no overnight or anything like that, Judge, but this, uh, this is to, um, approve what you had already approved, Judge, because of the timing of it. It was in between Commissioners Court, and there was kind of a, uh, she was being released from TDCJ, and they let them know on a, I wanna say something like on a Thursday or Friday, Commissioner Garcia, I know how that works. And they said, come pick her up on Monday, and so there was really, uh, not much, uh, uh, space of time in there to, to do anything else, Judge.
The amount on hers, what was paid out?
Yes.
Ration by Commissioner Tegarina, second by Commissioner Vasquez, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number 10, discussion action to approve grant abatement for Willis County Courthouse as required by, uh, historic courthouse. Restoration program, action required. Commissioner, uh, this line item, the following, we have already approved. However, I felt, uh, better if, if I came back to, to y'all, because what happened was that, uh, when we, you approved the initial one, um, I, I had asked for a 60-day, uh, extension, uh, from the historic commission, which they granted, uh, before I would sign those documents, and the one and only reason that I, uh, asked for that was because I didn't feel, uh, at ease that the proposed cost, um, projection, um. Because of the experience that we had with another construction, even though it's different in terms of renovation versus, uh, a new building, is a, a rude awakening that construction cost has gone up considerably. And so, uh, I did, uh, uh, sign the documents before the 60 days, it was just two or three days ago, and so I'm coming back to, for you guys to approve it. That way I feel more comfortable that, that you're aware as to, um, my signatures on these, uh, documents that, that were, were submitted. And there's two, this first thing has to do with the easement, which we have already, um, approved, uh, let's say a month, if not, uh, nine years ago. Having to do with the renovation, so with that, I'm asking you, we approve it.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia to approve, can I extend a second?
Second.
Second by, uh, Commissioner Vasquez, and this is a requirement from the, uh, technical historic commission in order for us to proceed with, uh, with the grant. Uh, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number 11, discussion act to accept award and approve signing the funding agreement between Willis County and the Texas Civil Commission for the administration of a grant of funds to Willis County for the rehabilitation and restoration of the Willis County Courthouse, and, uh, this is what I'm referring to. In the funding agreement, it included the, uh, attachments, and as the attachment was, was the projected cost of 17 million and change, uh, uh, the, the other, uh, thing, just so that I can put on the record, and we've done it before, is that what they're requiring for us to have a owner representative, which is basically an individual that has the experience, and if he or she must have the experience in order to qualify, uh, we did put it on the local paper for, I think, two weeks, nobody had applied. However, uh, I, I, I do feel comfortable that, that we will get, uh, someone to, to be able to be on top of this project once it gets started, day to day. Uh, I, I feel good that, that the historic commission is now requiring that, I think it's essential for these types of projects. And, and so, uh, I'm asking for you to, uh, uh, approve me signing the documents that I signed a few days ago, which you had already approved. So move to approve it. I have a motion by Commissioner Vasquez, and a second by Commissioner Tegarina, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line item number 12, discussion possible action to approve tax evasion agreement between Willis County, Texas. We already did that one, we go to the next one. Discussion action to approve Willis County entering into an interlocal contract for cooperative purchasing with, uh, Houston-Galveston Area Council, H G A C, action required.
Judge, on this one, I confirmed with the H G A C, uh, board, uh, member, or the, the board, that Willis County already is a member, and there was no need, we, when we, uh, signed on to them, uh, any new contract, we automatically are already renewed, so even though there was a new one that was, uh, circulated in 2018, we're still a, we're still a member, so, uh, everything is, is, is good on that. So this, this action item is moot. Uh, this is for the sheriff's office, that project, there is a training, uh, session that's set from January 22nd, it's online. So, uh, I'll be forwarding that to, uh, Chief Rivera to make sure that they're able to understand how, how this, their system works, on how you use the H G A C, H G A C buy, uh, to take advantage of that cooperative purchasing program.
Okay, and, and basically, uh, commissioners, I don't think we had a, uh, court in that, uh, workshop, but basically, what we came out of there doing is, and the sinosa was gonna make sure that, I think it's kinda like a bike walk.
Yes.
Uh, that, that indeed, they were part of this, they were, uh, in compliance, and then we would consider bringing it back to Commissioners Court to approve, uh, the radios that are, uh, outdated, to, to replace the radios that are outdated, and it looks like we're gonna be able to, to do that. The main thing that came out, uh, auditor and myself got together, and that, uh, in the capital fund, we did have, uh, three, around 350,000 left. Uh, and, and so, because of that, I, I feel, uh, a lot better that we are gonna be able to provide, uh, the radios that, uh, that are requested, upon your approval, obviously. Uh, and, and, and this particular company that we're looking at, we'll go into details when we bring it back, uh, does allow a payment plan, I don't know. It, it, it doesn't include fee, interest, whatever you wanna call it, but, uh, I think we're able to be, to, to cover most of it, I, I just feel good about it.
And Judge, just so you know, so, um, in, the, the, the way that, that is related to the H G A C is it is, uh, using the H G A C buy, uh, system instead of having to go out for the RFPs and to, to do that, is that you can, you can use it from, through here, and, and, uh, use them as your purchasing agent to negotiate with the vendors on what the needs are.
All right. So, uh, do we need, uh, to take action here?
No, there's none required, Judge, it's moot, uh, I, I put that in, in on the agenda before I received a response back, and so, uh, it was too late for me to take it off.
Okay. Can I, then we'll just take no action on 13?
Slow move to take no action.
Okay, uh, like Commissioner Tegarina, can I extend a second?
Right there.
Second by Commissioner Vasquez, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number 15, request permission to install a six-inch line extension, 44, um, 1,600 feet, and a single line.
14.
Huh? Did I skip 14?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I already, so we go back to 14, discussion action, request for reimbursement for Willis County Building Inspector Robert Salina renewal of P C Q O S S F F Designated Representative License. I didn't wanna give Robert his reimbursement. Just kidding. Uh, this, Robert, I believe you already, um.
I already, yeah, I already did, yeah, cause I already got, I already got my light.
Slow move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tegarina.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number 15, request permission to install a six-inch line extension, 44,600 feet, and a single line side meter service from County Road 15 and County Road 7, uh, 2,700, go west 650 feet on the north side of County Road 2,700 for a single three-quarter inch meter installation, then continue west 4,460 feet to a single three, uh, three-quarter inch, uh, inch meter installation, six-inch water line, uh, will be on the five-feet align, alignment, uh, the 40-feet right-of-way, four-feet deep, precinct one, action required.
Move to approve, Judge.
I have a motion by Commissioner Vasquez to approve, can I extend a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tegarina, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number 16, request permission to install, install a line side three-quarter inch meter installation. Uh, proposed location is approximately 1,720 feet north from northeast corner of County Road 15 and County Road 2,900, three-quarter inch meter service to a four-inch water line. Uh, we'll dig on the west side of County Road 15, four-feet deep, four-feet right-of-way, precinct one, action required.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Vasquez.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tegarina, any more discussion? All in favor, signify with a say a aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number 17, request permission to install a three-quarter inch meter service. Uh, location of ball crossing is approximately 300 feet east from the northeast corner of F and 1425 and Mulberry Road, County Road 1300 east. Two-inch. Two-inch PVC casing, three-quarter inch meter service to a six-inch water line. Will bore Mulberry Road from north to south, four feet deep, precinct four, action required.
You're all the north of Mulberry?
Yeah, but we've got a typo here. It should be 2845.
That's not what 60 says.
It should be.
There's nothing there.
That's pretty far off, huh?
Yeah, 2845.
Correct.
And it's going to be County Road 1300 east or west?
Yeah, they have it at west.
Yeah, it says east here. Just wanted to kind of clarify.
Okay, with those corrections noted and on the record, can I entertain a motion to approve?
Yes, with those corrections to northeast corner of FM 2045 and County Road 1300 west.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposing, same sign, motion carries. Line number 18, Request Permission to Install a Three Quarter Inch Meter Service. Location of our proposed line side installation is approximately 1,780 feet north from northeast corner of Sixth Street, or Sixth Street Road again, or Sixth Road. County Road 2900 and Davida Road, County Road 15. Three quarter inch meter installation service, three-inch water line. Will dig on the west side of Davida Road, County Road 15, four feet deep, forty feet right away, line side, three quarter inch, precinct one, action required.
Robert, only one question. Are they thinking for the property?
This one is over here on where Big Road.
Yeah, I know where it's at, but are they paying the permits?
After we pass this.
Okay.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Is it safe to say, or am I in line to say, Robert, that all of these that we're approving are basically new homes?
Not all of them are new homes. Some are pastures right now, though. They plan on building in the future.
Yeah, but they're new.
There's only one.
Those are individuals that bought property there on County Road 15.
Yeah.
Therefore, as I was got their substation. All these are new people coming into the community.
They're buying, paying, correct.
The one on Mulberry is, they've already come to Mar and stuff like that. They're going to be.
And then I noticed, Robert, on the other one, the electrical, they already have the pole mark.
Right.
On their electrical road.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That's another issue.
There's a lot of people buying out that way.
Yeah. There's a property that real form sold. All the properties, those properties that were sold in 48 blocks, now people sub the other in 18 blocks. So, yeah.
So I have a motion in a second.
Yes, sir.
Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposing, same sign, motion carries. Line number 19, Discussion Act to Approve to Obligate $322.05 for ARPA Project Number 2255, small dozer, four precincts, to be funded by Fund 114, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Act. Morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. May I approach the bench?
What's this? First time I hear about it.
First time I hear about it. I saw it this morning. I saw the amount, I was worried.
No, I don't.
You can hold some more, I just want to be sure.
Commissioners, Robert, on before Jessica starts, keep in mind that, I think I mentioned this in the previous meeting, that we are kind of making sure that no goose ends through the ARPA program as we are closing down to the end of it. I'm sure this has something to do with it.
Can we ask about an hour? Do you agree?
Yes, Judge, and you are correct. Today, for the sake of time, I hope I can go, this goes smoothly. But I do want to announce to the court that what our office did, along with our county auditor and also with the assistance of Mrs. Inosa as our county attorney, is that we combed through every purchase that was funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, Fund 114. Please keep in mind that we also received two funds, right? The first round is what we refer to as 114. And then the second deposit was what we referred to as a LATCF. So the time has come, as Judge Gera has been made aware throughout the process, that this is the month that we close funding, the fund for 114. And so what I will be presenting to you this morning is in regards to Fund 114. And you will see some items here that I'm here to answer questions to the best of my knowledge. And I also have Ms. Madonado here that would be able to assist. So this on number 19, any questions on number 19?
Jessica, just a quick, I wanted, just to clarify, it wasn't to obligate more, it was more to, it was to correct the purchase amount.
Right, and so this is just an introduction. So if they have any questions as we go through.
It reads on the motion to obligate more. And it doesn't reference the purchase amount. It wasn't to obligate more on the total project.
Right, and I was going to explain that to them, but I was waiting for them to address me. Yes, yes. So as Ms. Madonado, Commissioner Garcia, I think this is on number 19, right, Discussion Act to Approve to Obligate $322.05 for ARPA Project 2255, which is a small dozer. So just real quick, a snip of history. The court did approve for this, did obligate for this purchase. This purchase was also approved. And we had, or we did our best to, with the court's also approval, to have a protocol in place that would begin in our office, then to the auditors. That's just the process that took place and then payment, right, flow from Mr. Galvez's office, right? What happened here is, and my memory serves me well on this one, is that this product, the dozer, was delivered to precinct four in a weekend. The process happened during a weekend. And I knew then, as I know, and I've been in the grant world for enough to know that when we get to this point, there's going to happen corrections made, right, for the sake of auditing. And so within that exchange, my office had some questions. And we ironed them out as much as we could with Commissioner at the time, which was Commissioner Gonzalez. And now, moving forward, it's been discovered that indeed, 300, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Madonado, $322.05 were not accounted for because they were not obligated. Because this is what they, the vendor charged for the delivery.
For the delivery.
Yes, sir. So Ms. Madonado is correct. And again, I want to thank several people, but most importantly, Francis Flores Contreras, who has assisted, right, who was, she worked on this because I decided that I wanted to take Monday and Friday off for Christmas. And she did work on these obligations based on what I already have, the templates. So I do want to apologize, and this can be corrected, when the Commissioners, when they right now state their recommended motion, right? So you do want to make corrections.
Yeah, it's just to, I guess, to correct the purchase amount. Because whenever the purchase amount was approved in court, it was approved for 145,000.
Right, and I have that right here. Let me go back to my records here. So it is. And this dozer has. Yeah, but I'm looking for it here. A small dozer. So Ms. Madonado, so what you're saying is that you want, would like for the court, for it to be stated what the purchase was for, correct?
The purchase total amount.
The per, okay, because on here, my records reflect that the court obligated 145,000 dollars even. The total purchase, right? The total budget for the purchase was 145,322.05.
Well, the court had obligated the 300,000 in total.
Right, but no, the court obligated 300,000 per precinct. Right, but then when we present to the court, the purchase, right, for the obligation, yes, we did, we did everything.
That one item.
That one item, correct.
So this is what you would like to reflect for auditing purposes, the 145,322.05?
Correct, that's the purchase total.
So approved to obligate total purchase? Yes, ma'am. Total purchase amount.
So just add the 322.
No, sir, no, the 145,322.05. Approved to obligate, right? The total amount of 145,322.05 for ARPA 2255, small dozer for precinct four, to be funded by Fund 114, American Rescue Plan Act. So I believe you wanted to.
To obligate the total purchase amount.
The, right, to obligate the total purchase amount.
Yes.
Approved to obligate the total purchase amount of 145,322.05 for ARPA 2255, small dozer for precinct four, to be funded by Fund 114, American Rescue Plan Act.
Just to clear, Mr. Lees, do we have the date that, you said it was delivered on Saturday?
It was delivered during a weekend, sir.
Do you know what date that was or what year?
If, I would go, I don't have that with me right now, but we could definitely provide that to you.
I'm about 100% certain it was delivered sometime in December of '22. So I had.
We have that in our records, but as.
Office of '23. Yeah, no, you took, you took ahead of time.
Yes.
Yeah, earlier in time.
Yes.
Or did you want to pay us the contract in the other, right?
Well, I'll think about going back. We could have. Okay, I'll make the motion. You taking motion, Chris?
Yes, sir.
Maybe with the motion to obligate the total purchase amount of 145,322.05 for ARPA Project 2255, small dozer for precinct four, to be funded by 114, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposing, same sign, motion carries. Line number 20, Discussion Act to Approve to Obligate $313.12 for ARPA Project 2277, Judge's Office Supplies to be funded by Fund 114, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Act.
Ms. Madonado? Yes. Would this, would it apply to also Agenda Item Number 20?
No, this one they need to obligate because it came out tomorrow.
Okay, then it's fine the way.
Yes.
Slow move to obligate $313.12 for ARPA Number 2277, Judge's Office Supplies to be funded from Fund 114, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposing, same sign, motion carries. Line number 21, Discussion Act to Approve Deobligated Remaining Balance of $1,394.72 from ARPA Number 2260, Technology Infrastructure Funded by American Rescue Plan Act, Fund 114, action required.
Approve to Deobligate Remaining Balance of $1,394.72 from ARPA Number 2260 for Technology Infrastructure to be funded from Fund 114 for American Rescue Plan Act.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposing, same sign, motion carries. Line number 22, Discussion Act to Approve Deobligated Remaining Balance of $567.83 from Precinct 2, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund 114, action required.
I make a motion to deobligate remaining balance of $567.83 from Precinct 2, to be funded from Fund 114, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Can I entertain a second? Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposing, same sign, motion carries. Line number 23, Discussion Act to Approve to Deobligate Remaining Balance of $100 from ARPA 2269, Judge's Administration Vehicle, funded by American Rescue Plan Act, Fund 114, action required.
I make a motion to deobligate remaining balance of $100 for ARPA Number 2269, Judge's Administration Vehicle, to be funded from Fund 114, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposing, same sign, motion carries. Line number 24, Discussion Act to Approve to Deobligate Remaining Balance of 50 cents from ARPA 2267, Advertising, American Rescue Plan Act, Fund 114.
Slow move to deobligate remaining balance of 50 cents from ARPA Number 2267 for advertising, to be funded from Fund 114, American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposing, same sign, motion carries. Line number 25, Discussion Act to Approve the American Rescue Plan Act Program Agreement between Willis County and Willis County Emergency Medical Services for ARPA Project 2264, ambulance void amount not to exceed $268,025. Action required.
Make a motion to approve the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Program Agreement between Willis County and the Willis County Emergency Medical Service, EME, for ARPA Project.
Sorry, it's a typo on our behalf, EMS.
EMS.
Thank you.
For ARPA Project Number 2264, ambulance, with a total amount not to exceed $268,025.
I have a motion by Commissioner La Paz. Can I entertain a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Garcia.
Quick question. That, that hasn't been received yet, but it's been ordered.
Yes, sir, it's been ordered. We're intending to receive.
Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any more discussion?
Judge, and on that one, it should have been to approve the agreement as well. It should be attached to it? Is the agreement attached to that, Judge, to sign off on it?
It should be, well, that's what it, the agreement is this program agreement.
But then, so you all would need to sign that, Judge? EMS has already approved it, so it's just a matter of signing it?
Yes.
It doesn't need to be signed by today, right?
Oh, okay. The agreement's here, it's attached.
Yes, yes.
Yes, and if they approve, then we could.
Just want to make sure we do that because Jessica has deadlines, and so we have to get those.
May I have a permit so we can sign it?
Yes, yes, and Judge's signature is required.
This one?
Yes, EMS board already approved it, and I had sent it to Jessica last week.
Yes.
So you only need one to do it.
Yes, sir.
Yes, it's just, you all approved it, so Judge can sign off on it. Thank you, Judge.
So I have a motion in a second, maybe?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any more discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all opposing, same sign, motion carries. Line item number 26. Discussion Act to Correct Deobligation Remaining Balance of $8,320.50 for ARPA 114, Project 2305A, funded from Fund 114, the Local Assistant Travel Consistency Fund, LATCF. Motion approved on March 14, 2024, on Agenda Line Item Number 15, from LATCF to ARPA Fund 114, Project 2305. Motion approved on March fourteen, twenty twenty-four on agenda line item number fifteen from LATCF to ARPA Fund One-One Four Project Twenty-Forty-four Sheriff's Bulletproof Vest, action required.
Approve to correct the deobligation remaining balance of eight thousand, three hundred twenty dollars and fifty cents from ARPA Fund One-One Four Project Twenty-three Oh Five-A funded from Fund One-One Four, the Local Assistance and Travel Consistency Fund, LATCF. Motion approved on March fourteen, twenty twenty-four on agenda line item number fifteen from uh from LATCF to ARPA Fund One-One Four Project Number Two-Forty-four Sheriff's Bulletproof Vest.
I have a motion by Commissioner De La Paz, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, probably say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries, line number twenty-seven. Discussion action to correct obligation amount of seventeen thousand, nine hundred sixty-six for ARPA Fund One-One Four Project Twenty-Two Six Three funded from Fund One-One Four, the Local Assistance and Travel Consistency Fund, LATCF. Motion approved on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three on the agenda line item number twenty-five for LATCF to ARPA Fund One-One Four for Project Twenty-Two Six Three. One dot for Ramville Volunteer Fire Department, action required. Any more motion to approve?
Motion uh correct obligation amount of seventeen thousand, nine sixty-six from ARPA Fund One-One Four Project Twenty-Two Six Three funded from One-One Four, the Local Assistance and Travel Consistency Fund, LATCF. Motion approved October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three on the agenda line item number twenty-five from LATCF to ARPA Fund One-One Four Project Number Two-Two Six Three for Brush Truck for Ramville Volunteer Fire Department.
I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner. I just want to real quickly emphasize that it alludes to the Ramville Volunteer Fire Department, but I want to make sure that it's for the for Willis County, Willis County, as you know, has an inventory that we actually own those uh fire trucks and this will be in addition to those fire trucks. I just want to clarify that for for the public.
Is that what you have been ordered?
Yes, sir.
Just not received yet?
Twenty cents.
So it was short seventeen or eighteen thousand more minutes? That's why we're obligating more?
It's to correct the obligation, yes, sir.
Who's that whole project amount, yeah?
Right, I was gonna present that to you in in the report, but I look right here. I have so many different projects.
I know, it's a whole bunch.
The fire department, sir, um it's pending delivery. The total purchase amount is two hundred seventeen thousand, nine hundred sixty-six dollars.
I have a motion in a second. Any other question? If not, all in favor, signature, probably say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number twenty-eight. Discussion act to correct motion approved on October twenty-six, twenty twenty-three on agenda line item twenty-six for local assistance tribal LATCF to ARPA One-One Four will purchase a one brush truck for the Ramville Fire Department. Inventory under the uh Willis County Judge Administration for the total amount of two hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred sixty-six dollars for ARPA Project Twenty-Two Six Three. Guess I got ahead of myself. This is.
I uh moved to approve, you ready, line number?
I'll second. Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Garcia, second by Commissioner De La Paz. Any more discussion? All in favor, signature, probably say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries. Line number twenty-eight, twenty-nine. Discussion action to deobligate remaining balance of one uh seven cents from Computer slash Technology, ARPA Project Twenty-Forty-seven to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, Fund ARPA, action required.
So move to approve to deobligate remaining balance of seven cents from Computer Technology, ARPA Project Number Twenty-Forty-seven to be funded from One-One Four American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA.
I have a motion by Commissioner. De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signature, probably say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries, line number thirty. Discussion act to deobligate funds for salaries and fringes for the obligated total amount of seven thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and sixteen cents for ARPA personnel to be funded by the American Rescue Plan Act, uh Fund One-One Four, action required.
May I approach the bench? Okay, Jessica, I'm sorry, that needs to be said on the record.
Oh, okay. Yes, so if I may, um Ms. Carmen, again, Ms. Francis worked on these and it should read that this is for to obligate the total amount, or to deobligate, excuse me, the total amount of funding for salaries and fringes, right? For that were for the obligated total of amount of seven thousand, two hundred seventy dollars, sixteen cents for ARPA personnel salaries, all right, so three cents? No, take it off. For ARPA personnel to be funded from Fund One-One Four, so uh the way it reads there, it's just for one position? So um I just wanted to correct that.
So how should the motion read it?
The motion should read.
Your suggestion is how?
My suggestions, my, the recommended motion would be to approve to deobligate funds for salaries and fringes for the obligated total amount of seven thousand, two hundred seventy dollars and sixteen cents for ARPA personnel salaries to be funded from Fund One-One Four American Rescue Plan Act.
Uh make a motion to approve to deobligate funds for salaries and fringe benefits fringe, fringes for the obligated total amount of seven thousand, two hundred seventy dollars and sixteen cents from ARPA personnel salaries to be funded from One-One Four American Rescue Plan Act.
I have a motion by Commissioner.
Second.
De La Paz, second by Commissioner Garcia, any more discussion? All in favor, signature, probably say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, same sign, motion carries, line number thirty-one. President, instead of reporting the American Rescue Plan Act, Fund One-One Four.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, I I hope that you also received um a copy of the report that's provided to us from our ARPA Project Manager, Ms. Didi, Mrs. Didi Arpas Vendiz. That should also be in your packet. And just for the record, we do want to um just name the list of projects or uh purchases that were made with the American Rescue Plan Act, Fund One-One Four approved by Willis County Commissioner's Court. Uh project ID number twenty-two zero one. That was for our, the fees um for administering and managing this fund. Uh Grant Works is our manager and the budget for that, that was budgeted in the Fund One-One Four was two hundred, seven thousand, five hundred dollars even. Project ID number twenty-two zero four, this is for the Judge's Office Administrative Assistant for one hundred twelve thousand dollars, nine hundred thirty-three for one hundred twelve thousand, nine hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. For project ID number twenty-two oh three, Auditor's Office Accounts Payable Staff a total amount of one hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. We also had for project ID number twenty-two oh two, this was for our District Attorney Position, intake clerk. Um and then also she had for the Record Retention Specialist. We have a total of one hundred sixty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars with ninety-one cents. We move on to project number two-two-two-three. This was for County Road Twenty-Nine Hundred, Road Improvement, Precinct One for two hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and ninety cents. Project ID number two-two-four-six, this is a used pickup truck for Precinct Two and for that, we have the total cost of sixty-seven thousand. For the project number twenty-two forty-seven, tractor and shredder also for Precinct Two. This is a total of one hundred eleven thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars with ninety-four cents. And we have project ID number two-two-four-nine, this is water pump for Precinct Two total amount of thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars with forty-nine cents. Project ID number two-two-four-nine, water pump Precinct Four total amount seventy thousand, five hundred seventy dollars even. We have project ID number two-two-four-nine. I apologize, yes, two-two-four-nine, that's another water pump for Precinct Four.
It was seventy something.
Seventy thousand, five hundred seventy dollars, correct. We have project ID number two-two-five-three, goose neck trailer for Precinct One twenty-two thousand, one hundred six dollars with six hundred ninety-nine cents.
Oh, it's Precinct Two. Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Precinct Two, did I say Precinct One?
Yeah.
I'm s- I'm reading off your.
I'll take it, I'll take it.
I apologize. Twenty-two thousand, one hundred six dollars, ninety-nine cents, this is prints very small. Uh we do have the equipment shed that was removed. We have project number twenty-two one-twelve, Emma Ross Road Drainage and P- and Paving three hundred thousand dollars even. We have project ID number two-two-five-two, a goose neck trailer for Precinct Two for twenty-two thousand, one hundred six dollars and ninety-nine cents. We have the ID number two-two-five-five, Caterpillar Small Dozer for Precinct Four one hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars and five cents. Project ID number two-two-five-six, Precinct Three Constable Precinct uh Constable Pickup Truck, forty-five thousand dollars. ID number two-two-six-zero, Willis County Technology Infrastructure, three hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred five three hundred eighteen thousand, six hundred and five dollars and twenty-eight cents. ID number two-two-six-one, County Clerk Services Scan Indexing Land Records two hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred eighty-seven dollars with forty-eight cents. ID number two-two-six-three, Willis County Ramville Fire Department, pending delivery, two hundred seventeen thousand dollars, nine hundred sixty-six. ID number two-two-six-four, Willis County EMS Ambulance, pending delivery, two hundred sixty-eight thousand, twenty-five dollars even. ID number two-two-six-six, District Clerk shot files cases, sixty thousand dollars even. ID number two-two-six-seven, Advertising, eight hundred fifty-five dollars and sixty cents. ID number two-two-six-nine, County County Vehicles, it says two here, one hundred fifteen thousand one hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred dollars even. ID number two-two-six-eight, Zero Turn Mower, seven thousand dollars. ID number twenty-three seventy-one, Precinct Four Constable Pickup Truck, forty-five thousand dollars. ID number twenty-three seventy-three, Precinct Four Pickup Truck, fifty-two thousand, eight hundred seventy-two dollars. ID number twenty-three seventy-five, Precinct Four Barn Renovation, ten thousand dollars. ID number twenty-three seventy-seven, Judges' ARPA Supplies five thousand, three hundred thirteen dollars and twelve cents. ID number twenty-three seventy-nine, Parking Lot Improvement Construction, two hundred seventy thousand, eight hundred thirty dollars. ID number twenty-three eighty, Precinct Four Dump Truck, nineteen thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars and ninety cents. ID number twenty-three eighty-three, Precinct Two Constable Pickup Truck forty-five thousand dollars. ID number twenty-three eighty-four, Sheriff's Office Bulletproof Ballistic Vest thirty-six thousand, six hundred seventy-nine dollars, fifty cents. ID number twenty-four eighty-five, Technology Computer uh for Auditor's Office County Clerks and District Clerks twenty-four thousand, six hundred fifty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. ID number twenty-four eighty-six, Precinct Two Pickup Truck, sixty thousand, seven hundred ninety-three dollars, seventy-five cents. ID twenty-four eighty-seven, Justice of the Peace and Tax uh Office Offices, thirteen thousand, nine hundred eighty-two dollars, forty-two cents. ID number twenty-four eighty-nine, Sheriff's Office, Nine Patrol Vehicles Fleet, five hundred ninety-three thousand, five hundred twenty-three dollars and forty cents. ID number twenty-four ninety, Precinct Five Constable Pickup Truck, pending delivery, forty-five thousand dollars even. So this is the the list of projects that um were approved for obligation and approved of the purchase for Willis County's. I think that um judge knows better, I think anybody, the that this was, we were in uncharted waters. I do want to recognize um with this fund, I think that overall, coming from our management administration team is that this court was mindful. It's a very diverse list of projects, right? That we had to keep in mind that this was um funding coming from the CARES Act, from the US Treasury, but it is also keeping in mind mitigation, right? I think this court has done a wonderful job. It um has been a great learning experience. I want to at this time acknowledge judge and commissioners. Um the American Rescue Plan Act, Willis County, the team, the office, of course. Um it starts with the court and then our office, right? It was, it's been my, it sincerely has been a great learning experience for me. Um this is and this is not just coming from me, this is coming from the US Treasury and our trainings that this is the most stringent funding that I think any local government, state government has ever received. So I want to thank you all for the opportunity of entrusting the office um that I manage along with the the team members, which starts with, of course, um Ms. Francis Flores Undredas. Um she, I think came in not knowing, you know, never ever had been experienced to grants and now I feel that that is something that this court has contributed to her learning and for new opportunities coming her way. I can tell you that I'm very proud of her and her work along with, of course, our management teams, out as many as it can be with us here today. Um we also have Ms. Madonawa's team, our County Auditor's Office who um has worked with us from the beginning and now is a county auditor, as you can see the work that's been presented to you here today along with um Ms. Clarissa Salazar, who's there with her and those that were before. And just the entire team there all the way to our County Treasurer's Office, which is Mr. Ruben Gavasos, who also serves on our ARPA team. Um he's the one that notifies us of the deposits and of course processes the checks. And again, yes, we have here also Mrs. Aneri Hosa, our our county attorney, our district attorney who again guides us, you know, and um in everything that we've done has also been part of our team. And then most importantly, I think, is the the commitment and the willingness uh from our uh ARPA committee members uh which is Precinct One County Commissioner, Alberto Guerra and Precinct Four County Commissioner, Mr. Ernie Garcia. And then representing uh Precinct Two, we have uh Mr. Luzio Espaza, who is the foreman. I think that many times, you know, they would receive my calls and my text messages and you know, their willingness to to just come in and help us, you know, um with the reviews and sometimes not understanding, but just the patience that it took, judge. For this to be a success, I can also, I feel very comfortable that even though there's been uncomfortable moments uh between us why? Because we wanted to do things right for the community, for the county of Willis. And most importantly, because we know we're gonna get audited by the United States Treasury. I stand here before you today and I feel comfortable along with the team that I've mentioned, um Ms. Madonawa to continue to work, judge, uh with the closing of the files. Um this is what we call just us, not the actual closure, but it's like a mini closure where we're probably gonna have to come in during the weekend and make sure that the correct information, everything mirrors from the minutes to everything we all have approved uh so that we can be very well prepared uh to deliver. Something that I'm gonna recommend is that it is approved by the court so that a hard copy and the the one, the electronic copy that I know Mr. Gavasos has mentioned to us, we could, on the cloud, so that we can leave those records here Permanently. So that when you do get audited, judge. It's that you have done, this court has approved and we have delivered with integrity. According to the US Treasury, the guidelines. And most importantly, so that Willacy County can continue to receive funding. Um, this is again, Fund one-one-four, you still have the LATCF. But this is it. I will report this, like Mrs. Hosa mentioned, to the United States Treasury and the interim report. And, uh, I do again, thank everyone that I've just mentioned, including you, Elizabeth. I know that many of the times you're like, okay, what is this? I have to correct this, I have to correct that. And I, I tell you that I get on my soapbox mo- soap, uh, box moment up here, present this to you all. But because this is the way that we have been trained to, to deliver the projects with integrity. Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to thank you as well, Francis, for her patience with us. I know we sometimes got a hand there and I want to thank you, uh, Lucio, and you, Marty, for allowing him to be on the committee. Because it's not easy taking time from our board embrace time to be on a committee. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Garcia, because I mean, it takes a lot of time to be on committee, such as this one. Because it takes a lot of our time. And thank you everyone for everything this.
It was a great experience.
And of all the counties, I think, with the amount of money we had, we got the most projects. Done, the lot of, because a lot of counties just did one big project and threw out of it. And others, I mean, are going to have to judge because he's the one to say, no, we're going to develop this money as much as possible. And it's hard when you do that.
Yes.
To come to this now and we're doing good, so I'm very proud of everyone. So, thank you all.
I want to continue with, you know, thank you, uh, thank you for all the hard work. But I, I do want to look at something real quick since this is going to be filed away. Project number twenty-three-eighty, okay? Just can you research it to make sure that it's correct? Because it says dump truck. I think buy a dump truck. Uh, we, we got a dump truck. Just to make sure.
Okay.
We had corrected that already one time.
I know.
But, yeah.
And, and when you get a chance, can you mail me this?
We had made that correction already.
I sure will. I sure will. And we have so many different spreadsheets, uh, commissioners. And I will make sure that this is cleaned up. This was provided to me, um, shoot, Ms. Francis worked on it on Friday. And like I said, um, in all honesty, I didn't have the opportunity to.
Yeah, I just want to make sure for the record, it's, is the dump truck.
On the Emma Ross project, it was Emma Ross and Dahlia Road. There's no mention of Dahlia Road.
Okay, for the record, Emma Ross and Dahlia Road. Thank you.
It's on the status report.
Let me check.
Yeah.
Also on my part, I want to thank everyone also. And thanks to, thanks to these funds, my equipment is really updated. It, uh, really saved us a lot of money. And we're utilizing it.
And yes, and it's also, just like everything else, as Judge knows, is very well aware. We received the first was the CFR twenty-twenty. Then we moved on to other funds that have been available through the state and to the federal government. And it's good that you mentioned that, um, Commissioner, because at the end of the day, um. God forbid, we have another, um, epidemic, right? We were able to justify that under government services, you know, for the income. So I think that we also want, right, for the sake of the record, to also realize that this will be used. If needed in any other emergency response, which the vehicles that you have, right, is what we needed. Based on other experiences that I've had with you, is a shortage of vehicles to be able to serve, better serve the public of Willacy County. And the ambulance, I think, is going to be a great asset, along with the brush, the brush truck as well, and all the law enforcement vehicle.
This, uh, American Rescue Fund, uh, plans, act was put into place, I think, put us ahead about ten years. Or hopefully will cover for the next.
Especially with the technology infrastructure, you can continue to build on that.
Well, that's good. Yeah, the fact of the matter is that the need is so great, right, in every department, basically, including the precincts. And so by being able to spread this funding. And then that enables you or enables us to be able to buy into other new ventures. And there's some things that just repeat themselves and a good example is the radios. Had we not purchased the vehicles, the units with the ARPA in the sheriff's office, we would be looking for. Uh, how to purchase those and moreover, how to purchase radios. So, I'm, I'm sure that's the same way in the precincts where it enables you to perhaps apply funding into road improvement as an example, right? I, I, I really don't know exactly what you guys do, but by having those vehicles, uh, up- upgraded or updated. Then that enables you to do more with, uh, with a limited amount of funding that we all have.
And you're, and more capable.
It was a great program.
For response and recovery.
And utilize it for, for, for you, very useful.
Thank you.
For the residents.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Line item number thirty-two, discussion action to approve possible change orders pertaining to the Texas Valley Land Board, uh, flood project. Uh, I, I put this on here and I, I, I just. Put it on here more, uh, there's been some change orders, especially in precinct four. And there's also been issues about how fast construction companies are getting paid. And, and the reason that I put this on here is because, as you all know how it works. Uh, construction companies do have, uh, change orders, right? However, sometimes, uh, I, I'm asked to sign. Something pertaining to either change orders or just flat out, uh, invoices, right? And as you know, my policy is I get with a particular commissioner to at least give me a verbal, yes, I'm okay with it, right? Uh, because you guys get to see what's going on, uh, on the ground. And, and so, but I wanted to, to bring this up is because, uh, I, I just kind of wanted to, to have, uh, a, a discussion as to. Whether we're okay with, uh, continuing to do that? And are you, are you guys pretty much, um, uh, satisfied? I know there's two more projects that are coming in, not with the dump, water dump, but with the other. And, and I just wanted to kind of bring it up as a group and see if we're, if we're okay, uh, with it. I know Commissioner Garcia and I are needing to get together on some specifics. Uh, having to do with, uh, just invoices getting paid on time. And these invoices are significant. In some cases, over half a million.
Is it what you're talking about is, is bringing the change orders to court?
I, I think, I think you've, you've been doing that.
Uh, we tried to keep up with, some of them come up as an emergency and we bring it up later, rather than say we caught all of them. But I think it's important to do that because change orders equal money.
Yes.
That's all it is. It's a bill. So, you know, it's, 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 uh, it, it's, uh. You know, it's deviating from the agreed amount that, that we're going to do something for because something is happening in the field that has caused it. And yes, there's been a whole bunch of them. I think on one of them, we're up to change order number eleven, something like that. And I think it's important to, to stay on top of those things and you alluded to the fact that, uh. Some of these, uh, which is a whole nother thing, it's called a pay application. And a, uh, something with the, with the term, the Outlay Reports.
Oh, yeah.
If you're not familiar with those, you get, get familiar with these Outlay Reports. Pay applications and then your change order. But a lot of that's coming our way. Uh. Uh, I've got, what, three projects going right now? And, uh, it's, it's, it's pretty taxing. You got to stay on top of it then. To be honest with you, I, I had already thought about it, I didn't know how to put it into words, but. When you mentioned that the, um, historical division or the historical department, whoever's commission. They're giving us that grant, that they also require a contract, what is it called, construction foreman or construction?
Uh, owner representative.
Owner representative. I, I really think this is kind of, it's already watering the grid. But we should consider that with any project that's in the millions. Because, uh, you know, my background, my education is not in road construction drainage. It is getting better. But, uh, but, you know, basically we have to rely real heavily on our engineers. You know, to, to make sure that they're doing the right thing because, you know, I, I, you know. I don't understand hydraulics. I mean, I kind of do, water flows down, you know, you, not a. So, uh, you know, going forward, we may look at, at that expense, too.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, that, uh. You know, there, there's been some change orders that are, that are, that are minute or minimal in terms of cost. In fact, you had some that is the opposite.
Yeah, we had a change back then.
It wasn't, uh, but I just wanted to kind of, I guess one thing we can commit is that, uh. Whatever change order will come to Commissioner's Court. It might be after the fact, especially if it's something that brings down the cost.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, it'll go through, through, through here.
I agree. And, you know, keep up with the button because it creeps up on you.
Yeah, I can show that. Okay, so this is basically, I just wanted to kind of bring it up. Something that isn't actually required.
So we take all your pictures?
Uh, we'll just take no action. The man who came, we should take no action.
Go on.
Yeah, I'm watching by Commissioner Garcia.
Second.
All in favor, sign the papers, ain't I? And all opposed, same sign, motion carried. Line item number thirty-three, discussion regards to services with grounded dumpster for precinct two. This is more of, I think, an issue.
Yes, sir. I put this on here, I think, uh, service to us, I don't know how you guys feel. Getting worse and worse. We make phone calls, we don't get any phone, we don't get any return calls. Uh, we get promised a dumpster one day, it doesn't come in till three or four days later. You know, it's just been a big hassle. And my guys are, you know, spending most of their time just with, uh, container issues. And I brought, uh, my foreman, Mr. Espaza. I mean, he can give you a couple of, this past two weeks, you know, we were promised.
Yes, morning, Judge.
Permission.
Uh, so it was this, this past Friday. Uh, I had actually talked with Ms. Paula, which is a person of, I guess, contact with that company. Uh, and had reached an agreement with her verbally that, uh, we were going to have a container every Monday and every Friday. That's just to help out for the weekend and then to get it ready for the rest of the week. Um, so, like on Friday, I had, uh, texted her. And asking for the container and she said, well, you know what, we just dropped one off. You know, why would you need another one? I said, it's, it's what we did, it's what we agreed on. And then just left it at that. This morning, again, I just, uh, texted her and I said, just a touch base with you, just want to double check that we are receiving the container this morning. And she goes, um, I will check, I'll let you know, ask for they were there already. Now, I asked the guys, since I'm not there right now, I asked them, did it, container, did we receive a container? And they told me no. I checked on the cameras and the containers are still the same, so. She's yet to get back to me to let me know as to what she checked on. And it's just, uh, it's just an ongoing issue, not just because of what happened this last week or two weeks ago, it's just something that keeps going on. And she and I had, had, uh, agreed as to it being, you know, delivered on Mondays and on Fridays. And if we needed something during the week, it would be done. But even at that, it's, it's never like, like it's supposed to be.
There was, there was one example, a few months ago, uh, we were really in a mine and, uh, Lucio. She finally returned our call because she hardly ever returns our call or answers our texts. And he said the truck was running late and it was, and I specifically told her, right?
Right.
That we would stay there till it got there, because it was that bad, I mean. And I said, I will wait here. And I waited till eight o'clock. They said the, the truck driver was on the way, truck never showed up.
I believe I was at one in the afternoon and the truck was on its way. I contacted her again and she said, uh, it's on its way. This was already at four. Then, uh, Commissioner Higginson said, I'll go ahead and stay and I'll wait for him. I was going to be there at eight PM and they started to show up.
I, uh, I just, you know, being centralized in precinct three and I collect trash for everyone, you know, and, and. You know, I, I get bombarded, I get beat up a lot because sometimes I have to close them because they're full. You know, we don't change them fast enough, but I can tell you that I literally have to, you know. Uh, it's a phone call every day. You have to call, you know, put her, hey, and make sure you don't, you don't, make sure you come and drop it off. Make sure you come and, they, recently they have issues with no drivers. You couldn't, you couldn't, uh, bring the dumpsters in. Uh, this morning, uh, they, they, they got there early, about eight. Uh, they swapped them out. Uh, especially because I, I need to make sure Christmas, New Year's, I won't be loaded. If I was going to, in, in fact, I was going to even ask you and say, you know what, I need to find a way till I can put a fit dumpster. And we have four. Because they did early did some research and I'm the reason that by tonnage collects the most. So, and then a lot of times, I mean, it's just, um, and I got my guys, you know.
You go to Grushomper.
You know.
All day long.
All, all day long, all day long. Um, but, I mean, I don't know if there's any other service that, not there, I know that, like I said, they, they're out of drivers. And they go, like, you only have two drivers. And then they hire one guy, another guy, and then he, he works, and that's, that's their business, right? But he worked for like three weeks and then he quit and it's just been, it's been, you have to kind of keep up with it.
Just, I was just wondering also, we could like look into how long their contract is and when their contract is up. Maybe we can, uh, look at other options also.
And I'll look at that. I can review the contract if that's what you all want, want me to do. And then also look at, uh, whether or not we can modify it for, you know, any needs that have come up, you know, since then that are not being met. Uh, but I can review that and then report back to Commissioner's Court.
It comes up this year, Lucio, I said sometime in twenty-five, I don't know when. I, I, I echo what they say, Judge, you know, I'm around the platform of my, of the dump, you know, the trash site, I should say, hospital trash site. And, and it's important to people, it really, really is. And, uh, I'm kind of out in the middle of nowhere, I've got the biggest site and I have five dumpsters. But I'm also the closest, and I realize that, to where they have to come to pick up. So, as long as I call, they'll come by because it's, 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 it's pretty, it's pretty close. But even I have a lot of issues, much less you guys in the way.
I, I, I only have two containers.
You only have two?
That's it. And that's killing me because.
And ev- and even, even at that, uh, with having the two containers, a lot of times we have to subside that by having the back hole outside. So at the same time, they can throw, because sometimes we can't fit anything anymore. So we have the back hole out there, even that gets overloaded with the front end of the back hole because there's no more trash. And they need to see the trash in the floor and it's just all over the place, so then we have to get guys back where they're at to go help pick up the trash and then. Better just keep it down.
Just recently, I mean, I, I, uh, I mean, at first, you know, once our tr- it's where I, where I'm at. Uh, once these trash bins get full.
You're able to close it.
We close it down. However. But it's, the wind takes a lot of that trash into business seventy-seven, so aside from crushing them down. We're picking up trash on seventy-seven all the time. So it, it's, it's one of those deals and, and of course, you know, popular, you know, Facebook always, oh, well, you can't think of having an extra dumpster? Well, we, we went for, we went to four already, now five, you know. Now I'm, I'm going to be looking into another five, uh, another dumpster, uh, but I don't have.
I think, I think there was some issue of understanding, but in, in, in Masara also. And, and, uh. Something you got to stay on top of. I have a part time with their three days, so. But, but I think, you know, without saying, any, anybody, we just all go out for bids. I know that some of the other companies are the only other one.
Yeah, well, just, just in summary, what, what has, what has happened is, and I'll go back to Commissioner, get our kind of test. Is that, um, we were, um, where we had, the county had its own truck. I don't know if you guys know that or not. We had our own containers, right? We had one truck, one driver, full driver. And, uh, and at some point, the, the truck needed to be replaced, it couldn't no longer be, uh, be fixed. Though with one the other was that we had a hard time keeping up with the containers' conditions. Where it became liable, uh, trash sipping out to the bottom of the rusted off, uh, containers. So, bottom line is that the county at that time, uh, made a decision to go to a vendor, right? Now, having said that, there was only one vendor that would. Include in the agreement or contract to utilize our containers. And thus, the price overall was a lot less than the other. I think we had three, uh, if I remember correctly, three companies that, that did it at that time. The difference was a lot, right? So we basically couldn't afford to go with the other two and just park our containers, right? So, back then it worked, right? Uh, and I'll take it a step further, I don't think that the company that we selected, uh, back then it was, it was the same company.
Yeah, it was all the same ways.
But it was a smaller company. I don't know how big it is in comparison to the others right now, but in, in. in, in saying that, as the, the contract or agreement renewed, we kept that in mind in terms of the cost. Uh, we can, we have and we will continue to bring it to the table. And we, I think what we need to do this time is have a more thorough, uh, conversation with the, with the vendors and see what it is that they're gonna commit to and if indeed what they're committing to will suffice our situation. I know there's something that there's no issue, for instance, that about if somebody tells me I'm gonna be here, then if for some reason you can't, you call back and say, look, I can't make it, right? To not get back to you.
That'll tell you the service.
It's no excuse. So, so let's look to see, uh, uh, when this contract comes up and see what our options are now. Because I'm, I'm talking, um, at least a decade, not, not more, yeah, for sure, more than a decade, that, that all this, uh, transpired.
The only thing I want to say on her defense is, is like everything else, you can't find good truckers or employees like her well else. That problem's nationwide, the people just don't work.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I'm saying, I know that she, there was, they've been swirled scat.
Yeah.
Uh, drivers and things like that.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I just, it's hard.
That's her business, I'm here.
Yeah, and, and that's what I'm saying is that, uh, we'll have this discussion with other companies and see if they're able to provide us the service that we, that we need. You know what I'm saying? My hope is that there is, uh, companies out there that.
I think they'll bid on it, I mean, I like them, they'll bid on it. And that leads to my next question, the, the fees are paid from, from, they're not paid from Rowan Bridge.
They're paid, they're paid from health and welfare.
The health and welfare, which is under your permit?
Yes.
What, what's the budget on that, you know?
It's a four hundred thousand. Four hundred thousand.
Four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
I think that's, you know, thing that you all need to look at in the future, because I don't believe, I went to Santa Rosa last week and they said, we got free doctors in the, oh, they're in the. In Santa Rosa, we don't worry about our trash.
You call it that to me.
So that being on, for, I'm not, y'all, we have free service in La Sada, so, I mean, I don't think that's right for Willis County taxpayers.
I, I, I agree, then, one thing I wanna make sure that we, uh, on my part at least, on my part. I don't turn away anybody from precinct one, two, or four, I don't. I mean, they pay their taxes even though it makes no sense and they live across the street and they have to go all the way to Sebastian, it makes no sense. You know, so that, you know, so I just hope that, I mean, you know, like, I know I got people that are right on the borderline also.
I got, I got jurors to come out, I mean, every, three, three times a week, I told them no problem.
The tough ones are the ones that come from Hidalgo County. And, and Cameron, didn't that company come in, Judge, and ask for a price for a, or?
An increase.
An increase, I mean.
Yes, in fact, they, they've come more than once. Uh, when, when COVID, that everything joined up considerably, uh, they came to us and we did give, I think it was four thousand, you know, four thousand increases. Yes, and then came to us again, I know that we, 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 maybe just this time.
I don't know, that was, that was, that was it, so we can look into all that.
So basically, I'm not sure there's no action here, but we're, we're, Mr. Osas is gonna look into the contract?
Yes, to see when, when it's up, the, the other thing we can do, I guess, depending on when the contract ends, right? If it's still far out, what we can do is we can certainly have a workshop for, for her to come in and, and explain to us what's going on and, and this is the thing, I think he'll focus not so much on remedy, but more of learning the other side for when we do go out for bids. We already know what questions to ask the others to be able to provide better service for us overall, you know what I'm saying? That, I, I mean, I don't know.
Let's do it.
We'll, we'll do that, uh, okay.
Okay.
Line, line item number thirty-four, uh, there is, uh, I was told there's no, um, approval on travel, because, um, before we go into the executive decisions to go, and I, we're gonna have something, um, it's in order, do we have something now?
Uh, no, we don't, Judge, but I did wanna go briefly just to let you know, in, uh, the contract ends in twenty-twenty-five in November.
Oh, in November, so it might be for us.
So, so it's something that you had already, uh, and Cassie had sent to me so that we could put it on the agenda for going out for bids, uh, between now and when the new budget, uh, would, would kick in, so it's something that you all had already contemplated.
All right, we can do that.
Judge, can I have a motion for number thirty, pass or take?
It was just a discussion.
No, for a travel.
Oh, for a travel, I'm sorry, I.
Yeah.
Too much.
There's none.
I'm watching the second, all in favor, Sign the Prop, I say no. Before we move on, I wanted to make some comments about, uh, Commissioner Rivera. It being your last, uh, Commissioner's Court, uh, Commissioner, I wanted to thank you for your service.
You're my worker.
I, I think that, um, you know, uh, you know, you got, you got defeated back in April, is that correct?
March, March, I think.
March, and since then, Commissioner, you have not changed a bit, you know, you have. You have put your effort in, in, into your job up, up until today, just a day or two that, that your last day is up and you're still here, you're still contributing, you're still, you're still giving, uh, this Commissioner's Court your input, your input, and I think that reflects on the type of Commissioner that you've been. So I wanna sincerely thank you, uh, you have created a lot of relationships, not only here in Willis, but outside of Willis in other counties and I'm sure they're all gonna miss you as we all are gonna miss you here in, in this Commissioner's Court. But thank you for your sixteen years, am I correct?
Sixteen years.
Sixteen years of service.
And I wanna work you, you have a judge, and, uh, I got that from you, because, uh, when you were defeated back then and you gave it to the last minute, which was in twenty-ten. When you're, and we went to a conference in San Angeles, I'll never forget that, because Commissioner Sarato wanted to go gambling, you mentioned it. They go to Sarato, let's go to the conference in San Angeles, and we all went over there, and Commissioner Chapa went as well and, and Judge and, uh, you know, a sport, and, uh, we, uh, we had a good time, remember, in twenty-ten?
Yeah.
I had a slap with my head on.
It was good.
Hey, hey, we had a great time, I'll never forget that, and, and it was judges, uh, uh, like, like I am right now, a lame duck. But thank you all very much and I enjoyed being here in sixteen years. And, uh, I'm ready for my next chapter, I mean, I, I'm already getting my fortune in April.
Commissioner, on, on, on my behalf, I, I leaned on you quite a bit my first, my first term, I learned a lot from you. Got hard work ethic, very common sense. And, uh, you know, I, I just appreciate you putting up with all the questions I've asked over the last two and a half year, two years. We learned a lot, and we worked one good project together and it ended up working out in, in Masada side and that, that, that was good. You, you learned a lot of that stuff.
Two more.
Thank you.
I think you, you did a, a tremendous job, you know, especially being the senior member, you know. All of us here will, will be defeated one day and we hope that, we hope that we can be as graceful as you are. I can tell you this, you know, I'm a sorcerer.
Thank you also, Commissioner Gano, for all the help, gave me a lot of help, asked you a lot of questions. Thank you again. Yeah, and, uh, I had some advice, because I used to be in Naleo, I was a member in Naleo. And we went to the first conference and they said, the first day you're in office, that you're, you're on your way. That, that way it is, and that, that way you gotta take it. So you guys gotta do as much as you can for your constituents, because the time is very limited, it's, we're here just for a living. So anyway, thank you all for your, for what you all do and thank you.
You did say you took a per.
So, my question for thirty-six, Judge?
Can I just tell, motion, no action for line item thirty-five, thirty-six?
No, I didn't.
Okay, I'm watching by Commissioner.
Second.
All in favor, Sign the Prop, I say no.
All right.
And all opposed, same sign, making sure line item thirty-seven.
Judge, and if I, if I can, uh, just out of, for, for, for formality, if Commissioner, uh, Gano could, could take, could make that last motion.
Oh, absolutely. What, what, yes, yes.
Move to a juror?
Yes.
Ah, okay.
Can you say, Commissioner, can you say, I, I move the.
I move to a juror. One, eleven, you can walk, yeah. And then they, and then they come each other's. And then they come each other's.